Take the call to order, the regular meeting of Powhatan Board of Supervisors for January 22, 2024. Mr. Denonny, if you could do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Kenny, if you could do the invocation.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you request to postpone the agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order presentation? I have one thing. If you're here for the public hearing for B and C 23-09 R A Z, or C 23-04 C U P, those both have been deferred to our February meetings. So if you're here to speak on that, it won't be tonight. Can I get a formal approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
County Administrator update. Can we get a roll call vote on the approval of the agenda, please?
Aye.
Mr. Denonny.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
All right. Just one thing this evening. Our crews responded yesterday to an unusual call involving some animals at a barn fire. So I'd like to ask our fire rescue chief, Mr. Phil Warner, to come up and tell us a little bit about that, what happened, and how our crews and citizens responded.
Thank you, sir. I didn't know you were going to put me on the spot tonight. But last night about 7:30, we got, our dispatch center received a call for a barn fire basically at the corner of Dorset and Schroeder Road. And our amazing team at the 911 Center processed the call within less than a minute. And we had crews on scene within six minutes. One of the neat things about this was we had a citizen or two, as we're still gathering some facts, stopped by the residence before our crews arrived and rescued, I believe, five horses. And prior to our cruise arrival, and when our crews arrived, they went into the barn as well in rescuing an additional. The unfortunate side is we three perished. But all in all, we had a tremendous outpouring of volunteers and career staff coming out to our community to do a really, really fantastic job at that fire last night. All in all, it was an incredible team effort from the 911 Center all the way down to VDOT at the end of the evening, sanding the roads where we covered it in water and then it froze over. So I just want to reach out to all our public safety friends, Sheriff's Office, State Police, VDOT, 911 Center, and thank everyone, and thank the board for giving us the tools to do our jobs well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have one presentation this evening, Reynolds Community College update. And we have our board representative on the Reynolds Community College Board, Dr. Brown with us, who I believe will introduce Reynolds Community College President, Dr. Paula Pando.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm happy to introduce Dr. Paula Pando, who is the president of J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. And that is the community colleges that serves our area. If you read the Wall Street Journal, there was a large article today about people questioning the value of a college education. That is, that's a four-year education. Two-year education is alive and well. And where many schools have lost students, J. Sergeant Reynolds continues to grow because of the leadership and vision of Dr. Paula Pando. And she's going to talk a little bit tonight about what the college is doing and how Powhatan benefits from their investment in this educational organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Good evening, everyone. What a balmy evening to come out here tonight. It is the first week that I have taken out. I come from New Jersey. Now I'm in my sixth year in this role. It is the first week since I have lived in the Commonwealth of Virginia that I've taken out the puffy coat. So where will I be able to see my slides? So I know exactly where I'm going. There we go. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for having me this evening. I promise to go as quickly as possible and leave some time for questions. We're incredibly proud of the growth of Reynolds Community College, not just in terms of enrollment, but also the retention and completion of programs, and also the growth of our programming that we have aligned to labor market information and needs. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Barbara Brown. She serves as your representative to the J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College Board. I know we go by Reynolds, but I find that the people that have the greatest affection for the college still call it J. Sarge. So thank you, Barbara, for your leadership on the board and excellent representation for the needs of Powhatan County. So I'm here tonight to update you a little bit on the college overall, and then specifically on how the college is working and serving the needs of Powhatan residents. As Dr. Brown mentioned, we continue to grow. We continue to exceed our enrollment targets, our retention targets, our completion targets. You see it in excitement and enthusiasm, all walks of life coming to our virtual open houses, our physical open houses, wanting to see what it is that the college has to offer. This fall, nearly 8,000 students enrolled in credit-bearing courses at Reynolds. And because we know that in a post-COVID world, people have learned to access their higher education needs in very different ways. And we have been incredibly adaptive and responsive. Many working parents have learned that they don't have to go put their kids to bed, race to one of our campuses to take an evening course after a full day of work, because they can do their coursework through highly flexible environments, online, hybrid, high flex, where if you want to go to class physically, you can do that, or you can access that same class online synchronously, or have a recorded version of that class. So when life gets in the way, and it often does, for working adults who are accessing or pursuing a post-secondary credential, we have really changed the way that we deliver high-quality programs that fits the need of all of our learners. So we have one week, 15 terms. That 15 weeks is a long time for some folks to be able to commit. So we've actually broken up to two seven-week terms and three five-week terms. The five-week terms are very popular in our hands-on programs. Automotive technology is a very good examples where they're doing bodywork one day, engines the next five weeks, and so forth, but they're building on in five-week chunks. We have met 100% of our enrollment goals in the fall. And as we enter this spring semester, we're at about 102 and 103% of goal. And these are very, they're aggressive goals. We call them stretch goals, not sandbag goals, but stretch goals, and we are exceeding those stretch goals. But behind all of those numbers, 15-week terms, 100% of goal, there are people. There are human beings accessing what it is that we have to offer. And these are human beings from all walks of life, ages, races, socioeconomic background. And we're so thrilled that we serve the entirety of our service region and who they are. We know, we've shared with you in the past that we've been under construction in quite a few programs. These programs and the growth in these programs and the modernization of these laboratory environments to make sure that our students are learning in 21st century environments, so they're ready for the workforce on day one. Most of these dollars came through philanthropic relationships. The federal stimulus dollars, rather than plug a bunch of holes, we decided that these were once-in-a-lifetime dollars that we could invest to modernize our environments so that our students are work-ready on day one. No one has better healthcare labs than Reynolds Community College. Our simulation environments are second to none. In fact, I've been asked by colleague presidents at fellow community colleges to please stop allowing their nursing faculty to enter our facilities, because they go back home and say, why don't we have that? Automotive. We opened our automotive lab on the Param Road campus, 14 bays. As you know, we have a partnership with Toyota North America. We were selected as one of only 38 community colleges across the country to train and credential master technicians for Toyota and Lexus vehicles. And we have our general automotive program. Ladies and gentlemen, I will tell you that we have a waitlist. And we've had a waitlist to access these programs before we opened one bay, before one bay, which suggests the needs in our area. One person who did not make it to the waitlist was one of your own, Meat Chase. He is a Powhatan student, and he wants to have, eventually earn his master technician certification and own his own business. I love that he says that the heaters actually work. I think, again, it's been an especially cold winter. But Chase is one of the many students who have enrolled in our automotive program, and he is one of your students, being able to work on vehicles that have been donated by our partners in Toyota. We're one of the only colleges that has these fully hybrid and fully online vehicles. So again, our students are learning on contemporary, contemporary, contemporary learning environments. We have opened, or we've set up, a surgical technician program. We have learned from our hospital partners that surgeries are being postponed, elective surgeries, knee replacements, hip replacements, maybe a couple of, you know, nips and tucks aside from that. But these surgeries are being delayed because of the lack of surgical technicians. Those are the people who prepare the operating room, the instruments, the temperature, ensuring all of the medicines that they have to control for high blood pressure, et cetera, that the operating room is ready to go. We have just achieved our accreditation. Our first cohort begins in the fall. And I will say, we have a waitlist for that program as well. We have not even started the term, and we already have a waitlist for surgical technicians. Biotechnology. As you know, this region was the recipient of a Build Back Better grant. Part of that is pharmaceutical manufacturing. That is towards the Petersburg area. Our role in that is research and development. And so we have developed a new biotechnology life science certificate. Think those are the people who work with the microscopes that do the research and development so that the pharmaceutical manufacturing can happen. Again, many job opportunities available for folks. There is a dearth of talent in that area, and we stand ready to meet that need. We achieved military-friendly status, which speaks to our commitment to ensure that our veterans and military-related folks, spouses of veterans and folks in the military, that they have the specialized services that many of them may need to be able to use their GI Bill dollars and so forth. So we're making sure that we're taking good care of them, and we achieved that status last year. We're very proud of that. We achieved a $2.25 million grant from the federal government, one of the most competitive grants that many colleges compete for. This $2.25 million is going specifically to support students to complete what they started. We cannot be a revolving door where we have students accessing our programs but stopping out. And so this $2.25 million, again, from the U.S. Department of Education, will help us continue with those wraparound supports, developing our faculty to teach in contemporary environments, ensuring our students have all of the wraparound services they need to not just enroll, but to persist, to be retained, and to complete and get into the workforce. This year, we had 246 students from Powhatan County enrolled at the college. Interestingly, 14% of them are first generation, first in their family to go to college. 18% of them are working adults, 25 years old and older. And 8% of them are eligible for a Pell Grant. And Pell Grant goes to the highest-need population. 72 Powhatan County students took a workforce training class to earn a credential. These are non-credit courses. Oftentimes, they're five weeks, 10 weeks, that lead to a credential, and these credentials lead to a job. Some of them are in technology, logistics, skilled trades, et cetera. So an additional 72 Powhatan residents took courses through our Community College Workforce Alliance, which is our non-credit workforce arm, short-term certifications. This year, $164,000 plus awarded to Powhatan students in scholarships and aid this past year. We take very seriously that finances should not be the reason that someone stops, that somebody has to stop out. It is heartbreaking when you hear of a student who is three credits shy. That's one class, and they are financially tapped out. There is no loan. There is no financial aid available. We know too many families who make $1 over the definition of what qualifies for financial aid, but they're a middle-class family trying to get through college. I never qualified for any financial aid. My husband and I put six kids through college. We were all in, all pay. So through the work of our foundation, through our scholarship department, we make sure that students who are in good satisfactory academic standing, who are close to graduating, they get what they need to cross the finish line and enter the workforce immediately upon graduation. Dual enrollment continues to grow, and it continues to grow here in Powhatan High School. 96 students are enrolled in dual enrollment in Powhatan County. And that is the Advanced College Academy, by the way. 96 students will be graduating with their associate's degree prior to graduating from high school. Think of the savings for those families that their child will be graduating and enter college as a junior, as a junior. And this is the class of 2023. They just, these are Powhatan High School students who earned their associates two weeks before crossing the stage to earn their high school diploma. An additional 116 Powhatan students, oh, I'm sorry, 116 Powhatan students have earned their college degree before finishing high school, since the start of the program. Recall that we begin this program early on, ninth, 10th grade. We're talking to the parents. We're talking to the guidance counselors. And so since the inception of the Advanced College Academy program, 116 Powhatan students have graduated with an associate's before high school. Additionally, 39 students are taking N class, A class. That's really important. Not every student is equipped to do a full college program, but they can take a college English class. They can take a college algebra class. They can graduate from high school with 15 college credits in their pocket. That's a full semester of college. Think of the savings. The other piece about that that's really important, many students in high school don't think they can handle college-level work. Mastering a college-level class, a college algebra, a college English, might open a window to something they perhaps never believed that they could do. So really important that students are learning that they can master college-level work early on. And we have a new dual enrollment offering with Blessed Sacrament, Huguenot Catholic School. And so that began this fall, a new dual enrollment partnership right here in Powhatan County in history and biology. That is what they needed. Again, a lot of schools that may not offer AP programs or honors programs, dual enrollment is the best path forward for them, something that a college would notice. As you know, Virginia hired a brand-new chancellor for our community college system back in April. So we're almost a year now with a new chancellor. He has more energy in his pinky than most people have in their body. So we're all running fast on our toes. And our priorities under the chancellor are very simple. One is increased regional capacity. That means that what we offer, new programs that we offer align with what our region needs, not what we think we might need, but actually aligns with labor market information. And we're aligning with Go Virginia regions, Go Virginia four. Two meaningful credentials for our high school students. So I'm already at check, check. We have aligned all of our programming with labor market information, high wage, high-demand jobs. We are a leader in the Commonwealth in dual enrollment and students having meaningful credentials when they graduate from high school, and funding what works. Many states are moving to a performance funding model, and we are very much for that so that we make sure that we have the resources necessary to run the highest-demand programs that the Commonwealth needs. I can graduate 100 English majors for 10 nurses. And so what is working? What is putting the talent pipeline? What, where is the talent pipeline coming from? Where is it going? Again, aligning to our regional needs. And so I'm thrilled to say that while some colleges have had to pivot and downright contort themselves to get to really be on page here with these priorities, Reynolds has been on its way. This has been our direction. Hard to believe I'm in my sixth year in that job, but this has been the direction the college has taken around employers. It is about talent. It's about finding talent, producing talent, and ensuring that our employers have the talent they need to fill the jobs that are available. With that, I want to thank you for your support. We can't do it without the support of our localities. We simply could not do that. So I thank you all for your continued support of Reynolds Community College. You are an important partner to us. And with that, I will take any questions. Not too bad.
I have a question, but I'd like to thank you for your do for Powhatan. J. Sergeant Reynolds is a true asset. And do you still have the welding class?
Yeah, we've actually, we've expanded welding. In fact, I hope that you're on our distribution list. We put out a monthly video that gives you all of the information on what's new. And we just opened up a brand-new 14 bays. And here's a fun fact. Who knew? Three of those bays are accessible for wheelchair accessibility. And when we were building that, I thought, well, what is that about? What we learned from our industry partners, our advisory committee, who are welders and HVAC technicians, that folks in wheelchairs make up some of the best welders in our, I didn't know. That was my reaction, too. And so we have an accessible, we've now expanded welding to Param Road, 14 bays, three of them accessible.
I know several people that went through that, and they're very successful right now. So I appreciate it. Any of my colleagues have any question?
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That brings us to our first public comment period. If you haven't realized or noticed tonight, we've started a new process for the public comment. So we have a sign-in sheet on the back table for public comment number one, public comment number two, and for the public hearings. There's also a sheet back there for that. It's on the back table. So for our first public comment period, Mr. Michael W. Morgan, please. State your name and address, please. You have three minutes. Unless you're representing the group, it's five minutes. Thank you, sir.
My name's Michael W. Morgan, address 2841 Huguenot Springs Road, Midlothian, but I live in Powhatan. Make that clear, 23113. I was coming tonight to bring to the board's attention something that came up in the October board meeting, which was a discussion of family subdivisions. This came up, Mr. Carmack, I believe, raised this in the new agenda, in the new business. And there was a discussion that, perhaps that there were some, the current ordinances, I think it's 68-25 in the county code, which was modified in February 2021, has become overly restrictive and preventing families, say, with elderly couple that wants to subdivide and let children build on their property, have been unable to do so. My family was very much impacted by this. We had moved to Powhatan in the 90s with the express purpose of buying at least five acres and subdividing off two acres. The changes that went through in February of 2021 increased the acreage requirements from five to eight acres with a three acres, the minimum subdivision. So there was discussion in the October meeting, and everybody, all the board members were generally sympathetic to this because they had gotten so much feedback from constituents. It's difficult for young families to build in Powhatan now. I had a conversation with the Commissioner Revenue, and he said, there's just no housing inventory here, and young families are just priced out. So my daughter and her family very much want to live in Powhatan, love the county. My granddaughter is going to school here. They love the schools, but they're priced out. They just cannot afford. The only way they could do that is if we could subdivide our property, give them the two acres, just to give them the head start that they need. So the discussion in the board in October was, isn't this a good thing to do? Wouldn't this be a good thing to do, to revisit the acreage restrictions that were passed in February 2021? So the Planning Commission then was directed to look into it, to find out the impact and report back. And the county attorney at that time said, standard procedures, report back in 60 days. Well, I know, you know, excuse me, for, Mr. McClung is the only one here who is on the board at that time. I've had conversations with Mr. Denonny about it, so he's very familiar with it. But the rest of you, I'm not even sure, aware that these discussions took place. So I'm just coming here to ask you to revisit this issue. And I would hope that the acreage requirements would go back to the way that they were prior to the 2021 changes. Like a lot of us, like me, I moved from Chesterfield here just to get away from, you know, a government that I thought was pretty restrictive and bureaucracy, it was oppressive. So I ask you to just revisit this and get it on the agenda as soon as you can.
Thank you, sir. That ends the first public comment period. Next is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Mr. Denonny.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
The only appointment we have tonight is appointing one of your fellow board members to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I would love to appoint our esteemed colleague from District 3, Mr. Powers, to the position.
Thank you.
I accept.
So as you mentioned, two of these public hearings were deferred. So the only one we have tonight is ordinance 2024-1, and that is AFD Agricultural Forestal District for the Moyers. And Sean Clendenin from our planning department will give a presentation.
Good evening. Yes, so this is for case 2313 AFD, and this is adding parcel 51-8 to the Appomattox River AFD. It's 218 acres about, and this is for Mr. and Mrs. Moyer, as he said. Of note, about 100 of that is in the priority conservation area. And we have here Mr. Riley, who would like to say a few words about this. He's on the AFD Committee.
Evening. I'm Bob Riley. I live at 2685 Old Timber Way in Powhatan. I'm a member of the AFD Advisory Committee and speaking this evening on behalf of our chairman, Terry Adcock, who is medically indisposed. So I want to step into what would usually be her role. We just, we were completely in support of this application. The area, the 100 acres of the 218-acre parcel that... The, the area, the hundred acres of the 218 acre parcel that are in the priority conservation area, that hundred acre is wooded and deciduous understory and it borders the wetlands along that south side of Rocky Ford Creek. And as such protects the water quality, the wildlife habitat corridor through there. And is just a fine addition to the program. And beyond that, it is a, it's going to be an addition to the eastern end of the Appomattox River AFD and therefore will extend the core of the AFD in that direction toward Rocket Creek, which is, in our judgment, a very good thing. So that's all I have to say this evening. I thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
There was nobody signed up for the public hearing to speak publicly, so board comments?
Just technically open it and close it, public hearing.
I opened the public hearing comment period for ordinance oh dash two oh four dash one.
Now you close it.
I'm gonna close it now because there's no way it's signed up, so.
Just needs a minute, the minutes to reflect that there was an opening and a closing.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Board comments? Motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Nadi.
Hi.
Mr. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Mrs. Morissette.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
BNC are deferred in next month's meeting. That brings us to our second public comment period. On the list, we have, you have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as a group. If you're representing the group, Mr. R. Carl Schwenderman. Yep.
I have some big news. There are currently three highway grants that are open right now that could, could Powhatan County ask the county administrator to go after? The first one is the Raze Grant, just opened two weeks ago and it closes in April. And it's for any big-ticket highway project on Route 60 for a quarter like Route 60. And it would probably be, you could also use the Raze Grant to fund the Carter Galler Boulevard Extension, the Missing Link. And the second grant is the Carbon Reduction Grant. That's going to close February first, if Powhatan County can submit a proposal for it. That one is used to fund, can be used to fund a sidewalk or an electric car charger. And could Powhatan County ask the county administrator or VDOT to submit a document for funding the Shags Road sidewalk with the carbon grant? The, the Shags Road sidewalk is a little sidewalk that's along Old Buckingham Road and it goes to the baseball field at the end of Shags Road. And that's been a smart-scale project for the last fifteen years. And the big, the big highway grant, the biggest one, most important of the grants that's going to open in June is the TAP Grant, which is the Transportation Alternatives Grant, and that's used for pedestrians and sidewalk projects. And that big one could be used to fund extending the village sidewalks to the Powhatan Middle School. But we were working, I was helping the county administrator going, looking into that grant last year. And I remember that we got an email from VDOT saying that the, the twenty percent local funding requirement can actually be covered for free by the, there's a proffer from the, there's a guy who wants, the Harry Michael Potter is building a development, the Fighting Creek Depot Apartments, and he's going to build like a hundred and fifteen feet of sidewalk from the man road, Old Buckingham intersection to the Fighting Creek Depot Apartments. Powhatan County can actually use that sidewalk proffer as the match to go towards the big chunk to go all the way to the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. David Throckmorton?
Good evening, Dave Throckmorton, 2865 Moscow Trail. Just wanted to congratulate you all on your successful bid for the board. And hopefully you all up for the challenge. We have gone through quite the processes over the last several boards. The drama has been quite exceedingly overwhelming with all the drama we've had, the lack of anyone wanting to work together. So hopefully you all are willing to work together to get positive things done for Powhatan County and not just to see who can hold out the longest or who can support their ego, whatever the situation is. But just wanted to congratulate you all on your successful bid. And the last thing, I know green energy is the buzzword for the world these days. And we've got several solar farms in the county. And there's a lot of, is it the right thing to do? These sites produce very little energy that's usable. And we don't know what the outcome is going to be when these sites are decommissioned. Are we going to be able to turn it back into farmland? Are we going to be able to raise timber? And the bottom line, and a lot of concern out there, is who actually owns, owns these sites? If you do enough research, these sites are typically not owned by anybody in the United States. They're owned outside of this country. And I don't think, depending on how they are developed, if the county actually gets anything out of it. Because I know if they develop them in phases, they get a lot of tax breaks where if they were to develop the whole parcel, the county would benefit from it. So I just hope you do your due diligence and take a look at those. And again, hope you're up for the challenge and do positive things for Powhatan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That closes our second public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
County administrator comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Board comments? I have one, I'd just like to thank Phil, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, the State Police, Tom, his group, everybody that responded to the event yesterday at the Barn in District Two. I really appreciate it. And hopefully in the future, in a future meeting, we could recognize that persons that were good Samaritans that helped those horses out of the barn and started the process. Takes a lot of courage to do something like that, so. And I appreciate it. And that's all I have. Mr. Latchney, can you take some of the closed session?
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion, consideration, interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers or appointees or employees of any public body concerning the Commissioner of the Revenue and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation, open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating part of a public body concerning Appomattox River LLC, Zakiya Callaway, Beckner Case, the Good Case, the Shrimpshire Case, and the Try Hope Situation. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.237, 1181 and 87 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting may therefore be resolved if the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of four state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
Make a motion to go in closed session.
You want me to do the question?
Yep, brings it up.
Are we ready, Katie? All right, members of the board, where the only matters discussed in the closed session, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such matters as were disclosed in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session, need a roll call vote. Mr. Nadi.
Hi.
Mr. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Mrs. Morissette.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Board, I'd like to make a motion that we bring the Commissioner Revenue's salary to sufficient supplement of $135,000 effective January 1st, 2024.
Second that.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Nadi.
Hi.
Mr. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Mrs. Morissette.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.